Very early with acquisition financing and pre-development financing for this project. They provided $2.8 million in permanent financing for the project, which is incredible. This development could not have happened without their support.
And having recently opened its doors, Hart Village residents are overjoyed with their new homes.
I'm so happy, it's a new place, beautiful place. We have all the opportunities right here and they get more and more stuff from by living. We have a community room for the kids and tutoring class.
And CRA LA is also helping some West Valley residents live the American dream to own their own home through a creative and unique first-time homebuyer program. Meet Victoria Meredith.
Without the CRA, I couldn't have done it. They provided me a loan to go with the first loan that I qualified for. I just would have never thought that it would have happened. And like I said, on my own, I mean, I'm a single parent in California, which is very difficult to try to make it. So without that, without that money from the CRA, I just, I don't think I could have ever done it.
And just watch Victoria beaming about her new Reseda townhome, which she enjoys with her teenage daughter.
It's a townhouse, a two-bedroom townhouse. It's a rehab unit, which is great because everything in it is new. Everything inside is totally new, all the appliances. Now my daughter has her own room. We've always shared a room, so now she has her own room, painting it purple, it's the way she always wanted.
But wait, there is so much more on the horizon for the San Fernando Valley. Now still in the West Valley, we have the redevelopment of the Reseda Theater.
The theater was first built in the late 40s. It probably peaked in use in the 50s and 60s and was a very popular regional destination. But beginning in the late 80s, it's essentially been vacant. The CRA finally acquired the property at the end of 2005.
Once CRA LA got hold of the dilapidated but promising property, it brought in a developer to bring it back to its better days.
The CRA has been a critical partner and really pushed the project forward on all fronts. The idea is that we're going to try and maximize the uses possible within the theater, starting with a live performance venue. We want to mix in the opportunity to have a nightclub so that patrons can come before shows, have drinks and some food.
And once completed, this $11 million development will bring 100 permanent jobs to the project area. Now back in the East Valley, we have two new projects that will dramatically impact their respective communities. In North Hollywood, as if NoHo Commons was not enough, we have the 15-plus-acre NoHo Wave soon to splash ashore, adjacent to the NoHo Metro Station.
The NoHo Wave is actually a joint project with the metro. It will bring additional housing, about 550 units of housing to the area. It is the final culmination, if you will, of the NoHo Arts District, the mixed-use development here, where it will blend commercial, retail, entertainment, and civic activities right on the street.
But if there is one project on the drawing board that has the ability to revolutionize a community, it has to be the redevelopment of the old Price-Fister site in Pacoima, which, with the assistance of CRA LA, has undergone remediation for environmental contamination.
This site is currently approximately 28 acres in size, and it would entail a retail commercial center, basically comprised of a big-box tenant, electronics, and home improvement type use. These are types of uses that may not have been in this community for quite a while, and these are uses that are going to be very important for the surrounding communities. This multimillion-dollar project, once completed, and at this point we don't know when that will be, would generate approximately 250 jobs for the community, which is sorely needed.
So the valley is valiantly coming back. Beating economic decline and the forces of Mother Nature, the public and private sectors have created powerful partnerships to rejuvenate the San Fernando Valley to absolutely radiant results. The Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles looks forward to continuing its drive to revitalize our great city while helping to expand economic growth and affordable housing for all Angelinos. If you should have any questions about the Community Redevelopment Agency, you can always log on to CRA LA's website at www.crala.org. On behalf of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Los Angeles, my name is Brad Palmerance. Thank you for watching.
Hey buddy. Excuse me, sir. Ever hear of Navigate LA?
No.
How would you like to have access to maps, mailing lists, sewer connections, construction permits, neighborhood councils, and much more?
Sure.
Step right on in. Are you ready?
Uh, sure, I guess.
Then welcome to Navigate LA.
Oh, man.
By logging on to navigatela.lacity.org, you can have access to a wealth of information about your neighborhood and surrounding neighborhoods. Imagine having the ability to see the construction taking place in your neighborhood.
Wow, it's like really being there.
Navigate LA gives you the start and completion date, cost, and contractor involved.
Nice.
You can even get a permit for your own building repairs, such as replacing a water heater or reconstructing your own driveway. Now, you also have the ability to learn what current and future street projects are going on in your neighborhood. There's a powerful mapping program which allows you to find a particular address or parcel number and get reports on that parcel, including zoning. You can even see what flood zones are in your neighborhood.
Oh hey, can I look up some secret information about my neighbor Joe?
No, only public information pertaining to parcel and zoning data. You can also look up the unique infrastructure feature of a neighborhood. Here, you can select specific areas and see what city facilities are in those areas, such as fire stations, parks, and much more. You can also locate council districts, including neighborhood councils.
Well, I gotta say, I am impressed.
But wait, there's more.
More?
You can select a specific area and let Navigate LA generate a mailing list for people living in that area. Just think of the possibilities, especially for neighborhood councils. They can generate a mailing list of people living in their neighborhood.
Wow. Is there more?
Ever wonder where the sewer lines are located?
Constantly.
Well, wonder no more. Navigate LA can provide you with locations and specifics.
Wow, I am completely sold. So where can I go buy Navigate LA?
Silly average, Joe. It's a free service provided to you by the City of Los Angeles and the Bureau of Engineering.
Are we finished?
For more information, log on to navigatela.lacity.org.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Tuesday, April 20th, 2010. We're here in John F. R. Council Chambers, joined by our great staff in the City Clerk's Office and our City Attorney's Office, who are all with us. There's a close-up on our City Attorney right now. Welcome all. We are here in Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. We also are available through the Internet and through television. On television, it's in the city's cable system. Channel 35 broadcasts these meetings live for your convenience and rebroadcast them in the evening for your convenience as well. And on the Internet, if you navigate your browser to our homepage at www.lacity.org, where you'll find a wealth of information on city services and departments, you can also click on the left-hand of the Internet there and catch live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. Also there are our council agendas. Linked on the agendas are individual items to archive for past council meetings. So if there's an item that interests you, you can click directly on that, read all the supporting materials, and then also watch the council meeting that talked about those particular issues of interest to you as well. Finally, if you're not close to a computer or television, you can always use your telephone to call in and catch the audio proceedings of our council or any of the committee meetings. It's a service called Council Phone, and the number is 213-621-CITY. That's 213-621-CITY. Our agendas are made available 72 hours in advance for the public. They're posted here in City Hall or online, 24 hours in advance for our special meeting items. If you'd like to be heard on any of the items that have not yet had a public hearing, please fill out a speaker card here or at two remote locations for your convenience that we have in San Pedro and in Van Nuys. Hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms or city staff, and we'll be sure to hear your testimony on items that have not yet had a public hearing. You can also fill out cards for items that have had public hearings, but it does require council to reopen that by a motion of a council member. And then finally, if there's items that are not on the agenda but under our jurisdiction that you'd like to be heard in general public comment, you can fill out a card and just put "general public comment" on the upper right, and we'd be more than happy to hear your comments. In that vein, we have a clock at our remote locations and here to count your time. It's usually set at two minutes, but that helps you at the podium be able to pace yourself. And there's also a code of conduct there to make sure that we keep the quorum here in Council Chambers. Thank you to the council members that are here on time, pursuing the council rules. All council members should be here at the beginning of the meeting. That's 10 o'clock. It's now 10:04. Council members Hahn, Corretts, Parks, and Zine are here. That is just five members, and we need 10 or two-thirds of our 15-member body to constitute a quorum. The following council members are now late. If they will please make their way immediately. Thank you, Mr. Gardiner. So Councilmember Alacon, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Krikorian, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith, and Councilmember Wesson. Ms. Perry is excused today. So thank you for your patience while we wait those late council members. We again are waiting. Councilmember Alacon, Weezer, Krikorian, Labange, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, and Wesson. Thank you for your patience, and we will begin as soon as we have a quorum. Thank you, Councilmembers Weezer and Krikorian. We are waiting. And Mr. Labange, Walter Moore, and we will have a quorum. This is our last quorum call. We're waiting Mr. Alacon, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Wesson. Please join us right away. Thank you. This is our final quorum call. If we do not constitute quorum in the next couple of minutes, we will adjourn for lack of a form. Councilmembers Alacon, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, and Wesson, if you please join us right away. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We do have a quorum. Please call the roll, Mr. Clerk.
Alacon, Gardiner, Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business, please.
Approve with a minute.
All right, Mr. Wesson moves. Mr. Zine seconds without objection. Those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Weezer moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds without objection. Those will be approved as well. Next order of business?
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is the flag salute.
All right, if I can ask everybody to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Krikorian, would you be kind enough to lead us?
Facing the flag of our great nation, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Krikorian. If we can run through the agenda, please.
Items one and two, items for which public hearings have been held. There is no action required on item number one.
Okay. Next item, please.
That would leave item two.
Okay. Item number two, anybody wishing to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on item two and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next items?
Items three through five, where items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. If there's no objection to consideration, those are before us right now. Do we have cards from the public on any of those?
There are cards on all three.
Okay, we'll call this special for cards from the public. And Mr. Rosendahl on number three.
Item four for Hahn.
And it's Hahn, item four. And we'll go then to our public comment. This is for items that are not on the agenda but nevertheless under our jurisdiction. Michael Hubman, if you'd like to come forward. And after that is Kim Neverman.
Very good morning. Good morning. My name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist. Last Saturday, the Nazis came to City Hall. Water Corps was there and served 48 gallons of water in 16-ounce cups to the counter demonstrators. That's over 400 servings. Furthermore, the water arrived without a car. It came in a shopping cart. The television played up the incidents of disorder that occurred. From my vantage point, what I saw was a whole lot of young people that were concerned about their world. On Sunday, I visited the Medical Marijuana Awareness Council. I was only there for a short time when the police closed down this event. I was speaking to about five officers and getting a technical explanation of how the event did not get the proper permits, and one of the officers gladly offered up his business card when I asked him for it. The conversation turned a little more edgy when I asked if the first thing the officer said when they arrived at the venue was, "I smell marijuana." They told me, "They didn't have to answer that, and it's none of your business." I asked for their cards too. I don't need the extra cards, and I'm not going to name anybody. I'm sorry, I asked for them. It's not important if the event received extra attention or not, because the name of the event had marijuana in the title. What made this encounter a teachable moment was, three or four, or five minutes into the conversation, when I had become a bit of an annoyance, one of the officers, as a parting shot, tried to drop a civil rights bomb on me. He asked if I was on parole or probation. We'll talk about that next time. I do have a suggestion. I have two generic cards with four police officers' names handwritten on them. Perhaps the city could offer the police a gesture of respect by issuing each officer a box of business cards with their name and badge number printed on them. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Hubman. Kim Neverman is next. After that is Donna Pearman in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Yes, good morning, Council. I kind of think it was a real waste of taxpayers' money that they had to have between 12 and 20 police officers at the event that Michael just spoke about on Sunday. There was no smell of marijuana at all out there, because a couple of times I had went to the store in the corner for cigarettes, and there was nothing. And the way they threatened people, they said, "We had a certain amount of time to get out of there," or they were going to come in and search everybody and everything. You know, I wonder how many people in the Hollywood district called for service from the police during the time that this was going on and kind of were like put on hold because they were too busy harassing medical marijuana patients. You know, I just think the city's in enough financial ban, I mean bind, but to waste the taxpayers' money and have like 15 cops at a very peaceful event attended by legal, documented, medical marijuana patients, it's just, you know, I think the police could use their resources better. I'm sure there's crack houses, meth houses, and gang houses they could be hitting instead of medical marijuana patients. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Donna Pearman is our next speaker, and that's in Van Nuys. We'll come back, and Walter Moore will follow.
I see you're back, Mr. Garcetti. I was about to put a missing persons alert on you. Anyway, Marion Folklore wanted to be here. She will come back and speak to you clearly and eloquently on what the City Council is doing, but I'll do my best. We don't need the City Council add-on to their special projects. We don't need the CRA depleting our general fund. We need the money to save our city services everyone uses. We need the parks, libraries, and to take care of the water pipes. Our streets paved, buses can't travel on badly paved streets. We need our central city services, police, fire, sanitation. What our City Council and mayor is doing is legalize stealing, legal robbery, using tomorrow's money today. What happens tomorrow? Sooner or later, we'll have no money for our general city services. We'll be spent by developers, CRA, MTA, forced solar power, construction toward transit projects people didn't ask for. It's irrational. We need money for city services now, taking federal dollars towards special projects who are letting our city go bankrupt. Our cost of living has gone up while the salaries have not. People need to have their salaries raised. People will leave, people will leave Los Angeles. Businesses will leave. Make it harder for businesses, they will leave. Don't people realize money has to come from somewhere? The City Council needs to live within their means. People will be sorry one day if they allow our City Council, our mayor, the CRA, MTA, to use Los Angeles as a bank account. They need to be stopped before our city falls apart. We need to save our city services now. Our city sales tax should not be used on transit projects. It should be used to save our city, to save our, so people won't have to be put on furlough and people will not have to be laid off. It's inexcusable. This shouldn't be done. Let's stop the City Council now. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna, and don't worry. I've been here at all those council meetings. We've just had Mr. Zine in the chair sometimes. Walter Moore is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Walter Moore. My website is waltormoresays.com. The City of L.A. cannot afford another three years of Mayor Antonio Villarosa. He deserved a second term as much as the captain of the Exxon Valdez deserved a second supertanker. During his first five years in office, he's increased spending 32 percent, taking the budget from 5.3 billion per year to 7 billion per year. And now, when revenues are down slightly, what's his solution? Rain-in spending? No. He wants to turn the city into an investment bankocracy, selling off our valuable assets, the street parking. Why? So he can keep giving subsidies to politically connected corporations through the Community Redevelopment Agency. How did this happen? It happened because the local media made the mistake in March 2009 of thinking local elections don't count. As a result, nearly a million people who voted in November 2008 didn't show up. But happily for us, there are five people who have taken up corrective action. Their website is recallcityhall.org, and they have started a recall petition. They're going to need about 240,000 signatures between today, the starting day, and August 18th. That's fewer people than we have unemployed in this city. They've given me the honor of being the first person to sign it. Will it work? Who cares? Do something. Use your pen, get your John Hancock on, and throw this man out of office. It's recallcityhall.org. Here's how it's done. Did I mention recallcityhall.org? Thank you. You can find out more at my website, waltormoresays.com.
Our next speaker is Dr. Clyde Williams. After that is John Walsh. Good morning.
Good morning. Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Here we go again. State Route 710 north, extension tunnel. Well, it may not be a tunnel anymore, because Molina and others want to have the surface route re- route reconsidered and forget about Zones One, Zones Two, Zones Four, Zones Five, and let's concentrate on, guess where? Zone Three, the old Meridian Route. They report it to be the shortest route. It's actually not the shortest route, the shortest route is to Vertigo and Eagle Rock Boulevard. That's a better location, cheaper too. However, Molina has put forward an item that will be on the agenda on Thursday morning, MTA, that will state, "Let's do it now, get it done," and including options to consider surface routes. We're already concerned because we have heard through various neighborhood councils and individuals that there's going to be an interchange at Huntington Drive. Oh, how can they do that? Well, they can do it by taking out eh, three to four hundred houses out of southeast El Sereno. And the construction contract, oh, that will go on for about five to six years and just devastate our area. So, I would like to have the council again try to exert its influence upon those individuals that will be in attendance on the board on Thursday morning at nine-thirty at MTA. It's item number fifty-five. Let's try to kill this. Five hundred houses in El Sereno will be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. John Walsh is our next speaker, Matt Dowd will follow.
John Walsh blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org. There was a Nazi rally on Saturday. You were warned about this rally last Wednesday here. You knew it was going on, I asked you to condemn it. We spent one-point-one million dollars defending them in city services. Now, it's not only just the police, it's the helicopter, it's one-point-one million. They have no right, no one has a right on city property to get up and call for the murder, the killing of undocumented workers. And Mr. Weezer, as far as these Nazis are concerned, you're an undocumented worker. Your life was threatened. And I want to tell you, if you think this is ACLU, I'd like to see them held at Nazi rally on Ramona Ripston's backyard. Mr. Rosendahl, we didn't see you out there, we only saw you today.
Mr. President, he should direct this comments to the full council.
Why don't you arrest me? I, this is the place where inside you can't talk to a councilman, but outside you can threaten their lives. That's what this city is like. And I want to mention the three Jews who were on, my grandmother's name was Bertha Berger, she was an Hungarian Jew, okay? And then we have Ms. Perry, we don't have Mr. Rosendahl, we have Ms. Perry, and we have Mr. Corretts, and we have Mr. Garcetti, just like me, half-Jewish, who is maternal grandmother. I'm asking you right now, we want an investigation. How did they get a permit? They couldn't get a permit in San Francisco, they couldn't get a permit in New York, they were from Detroit, they came here, and the LA Times lied. Their story says that the anti-piketers severely hurt a Nazi. Read the story in the Associated Press. In the Associated Press, it says, "Minor injuries." That's because Russ Stanton is Nazi tolerant. You are all Nazi tolerant. Rick Allah, a Jew, are you Nazi tolerant? The press is Nazi tolerant. Sig Hile.
Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After Mr. Dowd will be David Hernandez.
All right, thank you, yes, Matt Dowd, I've, I've got a new CD coming out, and I'll tell you why it's under your jurisdiction, because this city sent undercover police down on me at Venice Beach, you know narcotics, vice undercover officers to bust me with undercover cops for selling a CD of Venice Beach in a performer's space when performers are exempt from that state law. I was in court yesterday clearing a bench warrant, there was a five-thousand-dollar bail was on me over this thing of saving a space at eight-forty-five when it's a nine-o'clock first-come, first-served, and I'm just waiting. And in the end, there's a bench warrant. Oh my goodness. Gets better. You know, the Hannah Montana thing, I was prosecuted for that, these are all, you know, we filed for an injunction, so don't worry about all what you can say here and this addressing councilmen and all of that. A judge is about to rule on that, a federal order is going to knock out your rules of decorum and, you know, they also ruled on the medical marijuana, so if Ed Reyes is listening, I doubt it, but we told you about the sales thing, it's going to be a problem, it's always going to be a problem because Paul Corretts didn't write the state law properly, it's too late to rewrite it now in this body because it doesn't have the jurisdiction to overrule what you already wrote. So you screwed that one up. Recall the mayor, I got the papers, they'll be on my incentive table at Venice Beach, you can sign up for that down at the beach, and here's why. Because he appointed those Laces Commissioners which you city council approved, and they lost all the pension money. Now I need to have some Laces Commissioners in here to tell us how much of that pension money is left. Because the way I see it, the city of Los Angeles is paying all of it, six-hundred-and-sixty million, and that structural deficit leads to bankruptcy.
Thank you. David Hernandez is our next speaker, after that is Phil Jennerjohn. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. And good morning, Los Angeles, welcome to City Hall. My name is David Hernandez and I'm one of the five proponents of the recall of the mayor of Los Angeles. The right of the people to petition for redress of grievances is a fundamental right of the residents of Los Angeles. Today, we exercise that right by giving the people of Los Angeles the opportunity to take action. After taking the required steps as outlined in the California Election Code and the Los Angeles City Charter, the Los Angeles City Clerk has authorized the distribution of the recall petitions. Commencing today, we have one-hundred-and-twenty days to collect over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand signatures from registered voters in the city of Los Angeles. And let me be perfectly clear, this is an opportunity for the people of Los Angeles to act. We as a committee will provide the resources, but it is up to the people of Los Angeles to take action. We cannot and will not do it for them, but we will do it with them. This is a copy of the petition, we made it very simple, it is in English and Spanish. There are five signatures on there, you'll be able to go to the website at recallla.org and download the petition. That is enough for today, but that is three-hundred people getting two-hundred-and-fifty signatures a month for the next four months. That breaks down to nine signatures a day. Surely, three-hundred people in the city of Los Angeles can get nine signatures a day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phil Jennerjohn is our next speaker, after that is Candida Maris.
Good morning, council members, my name is Phil Jennerjohn, I'm currently a candidate for US Congress, thirty-third congressional district. I wish to God that I didn't have to be here today. I wish that we lived in a city where the leaders acted with courage and integrity. I wish we lived in a city where the infrastructure was strong, where the budget was balanced, where city employees slept peacefully at night knowing that their futures were secure. But that's not the city that we live in. We live in Los Angeles, where the leaders are cowardly and morally bankrupt. They take their marching orders from the special interests and unfortunately from the DWP. The, the infrastructure of this city is collapsing, the budget is a catastrophe, and the city employees fear for their futures, never knowing if this week's paycheck might be their last. I am here today to announce the, the launching of the recall of Mayor Antonio Vierigosa. His five years in power have been an unprecedented catastrophe, the city is four-hundred million dollars in the red. He announces that there will be thousands of layoffs due to his incompetence. Well, I agree with him on one thing, there does need to be one more job loss, and I believe that job needs to be his. The mayor certainly enjoys certain parts of the job, he enjoys getting his picture taken with Britney Spears and running around and getting his picture taken with Bill Clinton, but he doesn't understand the disparity of his actions. He announces that there'll be four-thousand cuts in the city employees, and then the next night he turns around and holds an Oscar party with celebrities. Well, I don't agree with any of that, and this man has to go. You can go to the website, recallcityhall.org, the petitions do exist, this is what they look like. You'll be able to download them and sign them, mail them in. Voters of the city have an opportunity to remove this man from power. Choice is yours. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Candida Maris, after that is WM Rusposson.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members, and I did see you this morning, early at work, so thank you very much for seeing the president off. But I want everyone to remember this is a special day. Dr. Dorothy Heights, civil rights leader, died today, and she was ninety-eight years old, and because of her efforts and others like her, the world's a better place than we live in today. So I hope that each and every one of you remember those people in your communities that do for others. I know we have someone in the sixth district that's been forgotten. I will come here every month and try to remind the representative from that district to honor this gentleman who, again, for Christmas, made Christmas very wonderful for about eight-hundred people. So, again, I hope that we always remember Dr. Dorothy Heights and the great things that she did, sir. If I'd like to change the tone, and I see today that we're going to have a new general manager at DWP in 2005. Mr. Vierigosa promises accountability and transparency. It may be almost five years later, but I hope that we can finally have that accountability. We're talking about it from top to bottom. Mr. President, you know, in 2004, I came before here, this group and asked for help when DWP workers reported fraud in contracts and nothing was done. I hope that we can get your support this time, because as you hear, the public is crying out for accountability. And I know there are a lot of good people on this council, some of you should stay and some of you should go. And Mr. Hernandez, I hope that one day you'll consider running in the sixth district, I know the people in the sixth district love you. So, again, Mr. President, council members, thank you.
Thank you very much, WM Rusposson, sir last speaker.
Thank you, I'm William Rusposson, and glad to be here and to see what's going on. I've been watching you on TV quite a bit, and I've been here a couple of times, and I've got to tell you, I've been really disappointed in what's been happening, and I don't blame you guys, and I don't blame myself, although I just got to say that I'm unsettled and I'm, I feel real vulnerable. It takes a lot of work to get down here, I'm a patient of, I'm an AIDS patient, and before that, I just had HIV, and I, it was suggested by my doctors to start taking medicine, so I started taking it, and then I got AIDS, and so I still take the medicine, you know, and it's not good, it doesn't feel good, and so I alleviate some of the side effects with marijuana, and it helps me a whole lot, a whole lot, it helps me to get here and help me to get there where I need to be, and I don't know where that's going to be tomorrow, I don't know where that's going to be this afternoon, but right now, I just got to say that I appreciate if you guys would think about the patient a little bit more and, and make some changes that'll benefit the patient, you know. I voted for the Compassion Act, you know, in the last decade, you know, whatever year it was, and I didn't need the medication at that time, but now, there's a lot of friends of mine who need it that can't get here and that, that want to have access to the medicine, and it doesn't look like it's going to happen, and it's already, I've seen the dealers and people popping up their heads, the illegal drug dealers in my neighborhood, and it'd be easy for me to go out there and get something that wouldn't do me any good, and I don't want to do that, I want to be a law-abiding citizen, and I want to have, keep my faith, and, you know, I pray constantly, and I just hope that you do something that helps the patients. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, doctor, oh, sorry, we'll go to item number three, and Dr. Clyde Williams will be our first speaker for public hearing on item three.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, northeast LA. Correction should be made to the agenda item because it is not a transit initiative anymore. All you have to do is look at item thirty-three on MTA Board Meeting on Thursday morning. It's item thirty-three. That is Thirty-Ten Initiative, because between various people on the board, they have taken out the transit only, it's going to be transit and highways. So what do we expect? We expect that there will be monies going to the highways, in addition to those monies going to the transit, and that might say there's almost a kind of equal time, equal money provision within item thirty-three on MTA's agenda. So, I would highly recommend that you correct the transit projects. It's not just transit projects, and what they're doing is leveraging the transit system in order to get highway funds for Seven Ten South, Seven Ten North, the High Desert, the Connectors, all for the trucking industry and for highway constructors. So, I would hope that the representatives from the city of Los Angeles would make that correction within item thirty-three of MTA's agenda and eliminate any highway leveraging from the transit funds. Transit is good, rail is good. Anything in the way of highway projects such as Alameda East Corridor should be upgraded for the crossings so that, yep, the trains can do a better job. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. John Walsh is next, after that is Shamari Davis.
John Walsh blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. One-half million visitors by the end of the month since September third, with only fourteen posts. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a pipe dream, what is the mayor smoking? Everybody who's watching this, go and Google this and read the Wall Street Journal story. They laughed at Antonio who went down there. He went there and said, "I want to borrow ten billion dollars or so, so I can get more transit projects here." And they said, "What do you want to, there is no structure to lend this county the money. There is no national infrastructure bank, and how well are you doing?" We know that the ridership on the rails now is eighty percent lower, low-income minorities. Come and smell the hydrogen sulfide gas, look at the walls, the whole system is collapsing, and you want to build new infrastructure? You want, ladies and gentlemen, our position, as far as the, the President of the United States is going to make the decision, I hope everyone saw the look on the president's face when he got heckled in Los Angeles, and he walked right over to Barbara Boxer, and so why are they heckling me? Because those people who heckled him didn't pay the money, they were gay activists that she brought in and then they stopped the whole thing. You know, he's got a poker face, the President of the United States, but in his eyes, I saw an arc of hatred. He realizes what's happening, he realizes the city's out of control, he realizes the mayor's out of control, and when I'm the voice of reason in the city of Los Angeles, it's beyond out of control. And if you want to know what's happening in this city, don't read the LA Times, hollywoodhighlands.org, hollywoodhighlands.org. We're going to increase our, our posting, and we have an enormous post coming up about killer cops.
Shamari Davis is our next speaker, after that is Matt Dowd. Good morning, Mr. Davis.
Good morning. Following John Walsh, it's going to be interesting. Good morning, city council, my name is Shamari Davis and I'm a business agent for IBW Electricians Union. The resolution you have before you is indeed unique. To build thirty years of worth of construction in ten years, only a feat that Los Angeles County and Los Angeles City would dare to broach. When Vierigosa proposed this great resolution after the passing of Mezurar, I was privileged to go to Washington DC and lobby with the likes of Senator Barbara Boxer and others who would listen, and they really loved the idea. It's never been done to borrow money against tax revenue stream to a city, but only Los Angeles could be able to do this. With the high unemployment in construction and almost thirteen-hundred IBW electricians out of work, the support of this Thirty-Ten Initiative will not only boost job creation, but will definitely be the solution to mass transit in Los Angeles County. Please support this. Thank you.
Yes, first of all, it was out of control when Zuma Dog was the voice of reason in the city of Los Angeles. That was four years ago, and still, it's just gone downhill from here. Let's, let's talk about this one, getting money out of the federal government now when you're already broke. See, here's what I want, and it's just what I want, and I'm just going to express it, no subway to the sea, no subways to the sea. You know, how, how many people, hands up all the people here who, who did not come in a private motor vehicle here today? motor vehicle here today? Four out of this probably like 60 or 70 people. So the fact is, people don't want to get out of their cars. They've got to pick up their kids from school. No bus or public transit, Rapid Rail goes to the school to pick up the children. They've got to get their groceries. There's all these things, banking, postal. Are you going to build a subway to the post office? Is there a, you know, there's all these things that, this is a motor vehicle city. So all these transit projects need to be fundamentally based around motor vehicles. Now, if there's high-density transit corridors where you can put people, but look at it, nobody wants to use those because they, the city is designed for 100 years around a motor vehicle. And now you're trying to put, you know what you do need is to get the trucks off the street. I've said this five, six, seven times. You need a subway out of the Port of Los Angeles. Get the federal government, the national economy is taking all the goods, the country, the USA is using all these things, so get the money from the federal government to build a subway to get the containers out of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Your time is up. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, public out there. This is an amazing new day, and what this initiative is, and I'd like staff to come on up for a quick second and give us a rundown. Come on up, Jaime. You know, 3010, 2010, whatever we do in life, we try to figure out how to put it out there so people can appreciate. The good news is this. Couple of years ago, we, the people in this great county of Los Angeles, voted yes on Measure R. That was a half a cent sales tax that over the next 30 years ends up being the kinds of monies this region needs to build the infrastructure we need to do. Well, you know, 30 years, I'm going to be dead. I hate to tell you, folks. Some people applaud. Some people applaud. Okay, well, maybe I'll make it to 90. Okay, all right, Alacan's got me going. Everybody's got, Janus Ham was jumping at me there. Okay, bottom line is, folks, we don't have 30, 40 years to play around. The gridlock is awesome right now, and we need to get out of it. So what did our great mayor do with his genius, which is terrific? He said, "Look, we, the people, are going to be taxing ourselves in LA County, so come on, federal government, give us some money to borrow again so we can accelerate all these projects over the next 10 years." 12 projects, and just to give you a quick hit about some things, these 12 major projects, this would reduce the overall cost by 3.8 billion. It will create 165,000 construction jobs over the next 10 years and create 2,800 permanent operating and maintenance jobs. This will dramatically reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. This significantly expands our rail systems and all kinds of other systems, including bike paths and pedestrian paths. So if we could have a quick report from those two distinguished gentlemen on what this is about and why we, as a council, should pass this resolution.
Mr. Katz, you are a distinguished gentleman.
Mr. President, thank, Mr. President, council members, thank you very much. On behalf of the mayor, I want to thank Councilman Rosendahl for a great summary of 3010. Very simply, it essentially drops a transportation system in LA County in 10 years instead of 30, creates the jobs as the councilman mentioned, puts people to work, cleans our air. It represents a new way to invest smartly in our urban core, and we believe, as a number of people, including a deputy secretary of transportation, Roy Keenan, said, "This is a vision for how transportation dollars in the future will help revitalize cities throughout America." We are not asking the feds for a bailout, unlike everybody else. Our, as the councilman said, our voters voted for this. We just want to put the money to work quicker and make sure the jobs are in LA so the people paying the taxes get the benefit of both reduced air pollution, better mobility, and well-paying jobs, and be happy to answer any questions you have. But thank you, council members.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Rosendahl, who's being modest in that he really joined our mayor early on in thinking this through, and this council had discussions about how do we accelerate using stimulus dollars, much of our infrastructure work, and thank you for your leadership. And the last thing that the president heard, I was with the mayor as he boarded Air Force One, and I was standing there, it was just the three of us talking, and we both pitched 3010. The president said, "Mr. Mayor, you're indefatigable," and he had a big smile on his face, and he looked at both of us and he said, "We're going to do whatever we can," and he headed up Air Force One. And it will not be easy, as some have said. It's true, we have to, there is no mechanism that currently exists, there's not a National Infrastructure Bank, though there's been talk about it. But there are recovery bonds, there are ways of doing this, and I think that this is a great chance for the federal government, not to just do this for LA, but there are other municipalities who will be passing transportation measures, as Denver did a few years back, and they can front-load them, and I think our success will ride on the way we can try to pull in a couple other cities as well, though LA will certainly be at the forefront. Mr. Rosendahl, I want to thank you as well for pointing out that this is really important. Our building trades folks that are here, Shamari and others, who have put this out there, and we had a great rally out here with about 1,000 folks from the building trades. Why not do it cheaper? Because the folks are saying, if this is going to have some carrying costs, and we have to pay something on whether this gets bonded or not, if we can save almost $4 billion upfront, one should be able to take care of the other. And getting people back to work has to be our number-one priority in this city. That and balancing the budget are our two main priorities right now. This council certainly talked about it, and with champions like Richard Katz behind, Denny Zane, who's been just a great champion of this as well, I think the time is there. So keep up that momentum. Had a couple meetings at the White House with the head of their inner government affairs office, and they are going to help push within the federal bureaucracy for this, because it will take a lot of courage, and it won't happen overnight, we know that. But when it does happen, I think we can look back on it as something good, not just for Los Angeles, but for this country. And hopefully, it will inspire the municipalities to say, if they can pass these, we can see this era, this next decade, as one of those great moments, just as Eisenhower built the interstate highways. This is a moment that we can build our city-based transit system. So I have no questions for you guys, just keep up the good work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Rosendahl, and we'll continue to do that and whisper that. And I'm glad that, right now on Air Force One, there's a president who may be ruminating on what he can do to help LA.
Mr. LaBanche. Mr. Katz? Mr. LaBanche?
Richard?
I'll wait.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Mr. Garcetti, thank you for your leadership, Mr. Garcetti on that, and they're repeating that story. Mr. Rosendahl, always, we don't want anybody to go to heaven too soon. So, but I think this does give us a concept, but to see, if you take this, you know, 30 years out from right now is almost 2039. Is that math correct, Mr. City Attorney? So 2039, let's go back the other way. We're really just going back to 19, uh...
Eighty.
Eighty-nine, is that right? Or seventy-nine?
Eighty.
Eighty. Seventy-nine. Thank you very much. Our math is right. But look at the missed opportunities that were taking place in those 30 years. Now this is a great opportunity. The one thing, members, I said this before, I talked to the mayor, we have to create a department of multiple agencies to be able to facilitate our movements with this displacement of many challenges that we have now, the reorganization due to the budget challenges. We've got to make sure that there's a team of people working in somewhat of a transportation-focused room. I didn't want to say a war room, because I don't like to use that analogy, but the same thing that they did in many other places, where they put all the powers to be, because that's the only way we're going to do it, to get that cooperation. Mr. De La Vega, give us some of your, because you've been working on this for many, many years, for almost its last century. When you worked for Mayor Reardon.
Yeah, just two observations about, you know, the recent history here in Los Angeles. I don't think we should underestimate this city and this region's ability and willingness to invest in transportation infrastructure and to be innovative. So two points. First, Measure R was passed by 68% of this county and 72% of this city in the midst of a recession. That was probably unpredictable by everybody. The second point, which goes back a little bit further, is a project called the Alameda Corridor. What was important about the Alameda Corridor was that this city, the Port of LA, Port of Long Beach, MTA, and others partnered to develop a financing program and actually secure the first federal loan. There was no federal loan program when the Alameda Corridor came into being, and that loan structure became the basis for what is now the Federal TFIya Loan Program. So the fact that an existing structure does not exist today does not mean that we cannot create a new structure, a new partnership with the federal government to make this happen.
Right, and how much is in the program for any roadway improvement, freeway improvement?
The Measure R had... 20%? Measure R is highway dedicated.
Right.
3010 is a transit program, but at the same time, we're also asking the federal government to work with our congressional delegation to speed up highway programs as well.
Exactly, because we don't need to widen freeways, but we need to correct the choke points. When you go back to the San Fernando Valley, you'll get to the universal sitting area, the Hollywood Freeway goes from five lanes to four. Why? I don't know. But we correct that, it could flow better. Other parts of the valley have freeway interchanges that don't have the capacity that we should try to look to within the existing right-of-way. The Hollywood Freeway coming to the floor level. At Vermont, there's a problem. At Union Avenue-Glendale, there's a choke point. Those should be corrected, not widened, but adjusted, so there's a sound wall and ways you could make it flow better. And I think it's great that Doug Phailings over at the MTA, Mr. Katz, and I appreciate, Mr. De La Vega, I appreciate this, all with it up with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. LaBanche. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to join the chorus of thank yous for all your hard work, but I want to ask a question, and I want you to imagine being in a community room, you have constituents who have been concerned about how we look at land use and how we look at this notion of leveraging. Council President, there's a lot of conversations around, it's hard to hear my own self.
Mr. Reyes, I've asked Sergeant Arms to quiet the council chambers. There are staff around the horseshoe, and it's the staff that is creating disturbance. Staff, if you have a conversation, please take it out of the room.
It's on that side.
It's on the right side. So staff, if you have conversations, take it in the back. You're very disruptive with the council meeting. Mr. Reyes, please proceed. Sergeant Arms, we need to keep the chambers quiet. So staff, take your conversations out of the room. Thank you. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Imagine you're in a community room, you have constituents who are concerned about all the time we invested on the Los Angeles River, all the time invested in improving the bicycle plans and how we connect with our rail stations. We look at the issue of how we provide mixed-income housing. Pushing these projects forward requires that level of coordination. Has there been any thought as to how you start creating this level of dialogue or communication with the various agencies, with the city, understanding that the city planning department's been cut about 30, 40%? These plans have to move forward. If we're going to accelerate these projects, what has been the nature of your discussion? How would I respond to my constituents?
Well, I think, councilman, I think it's a great question, and obviously, without the cooperation of the community, we're never going to move projects forward. These projects have all been, these are not new projects. These are projects that were identified in Measure R when they were on the ballot and passed in November of '08. Since then, the environmental work has started on a number of these projects that will involve extensive community outreach, extensive community meetings, and extensive community conversations. So those conversations in some of these projects have already started. You know, people talk about the 12 projects here, and some people have said, "Start them all simultaneously." We don't start 12 projects simultaneously, so we obviously do them in order of 1 to 12, but we will be starting multiple projects simultaneously, and both the point you're making and the point Councilman LaBanche was making about being able to process the paper and approvals of these plans is going to be a critical element to that. We hope to be able to partner with the city, and I know the mayor's given some thought to this already, but it's a ways down the road, that hopefully, the city will be able to create the same kind of task force we are, sort of multidisciplinary task force that we're creating at the MTA to move these projects forward so that folks can focus on the projects across various departments from the city in a very efficient way that allows us to move forward, but doesn't sacrifice public input and public participation as part of accelerating these projects.
So when we look at investment on the River Master Plan and what high-speed rail is, and I appreciate the work they've been doing lately in terms of being more inclusive, and my challenge to you, quite frankly, and to Mr. Jaime de La Vega and others is, how do we start breaking out of these silos?
Right.
Of it just being a transit project? We need to pay attention to how the infrastructure will behave, meaning how the sidewalks are going to look, what type of streets we're going to have. Did we create safety for the bicyclists, or didn't we provide the kind of inner action where open space and the need for our river system to continue to bloom in a manner that's been reflected in the eight years invested in that master plan?
And that's one reason why the projects that are here are all projects that have been thoroughly vetted through the MTA's long-term, long-range planning process, which went on for several years. They recognize and complement existing projects and proposed projects throughout the county, including and especially the city of Los Angeles. We understand that these are not standalone projects. They've got to coexist, and in fact, you know, we're excited, based on what we've seen on the new, the east side extension that opened recently, the transit-oriented development that took place around those station locations has been impressive, and frankly, areas that have had trouble creating economic development, as you know so well, because you were very helpful in doing this, now have an opportunity they never had before. We hope to replicate that. One thing on high-speed rail, which is not covered in 3010, obviously, but you should be aware that at the last High-Speed Rail meeting, we went back and added the shared track concept back into the discussion so that what's coming out of Union Station and back in the alternative discussion will be at grade as opposed to new overhead structures, that we take the money that would have been spent on a lot of those overhead structures and use it to grade, separate everything along that track, which is, I know you're concerned, the community's concerned, Councilman LaBanche has talked to me about that in the past. So we believe those grade crossings and that new shift in how high-speed rail is being looked at, that's more neighborhood-friendly, will accomplish exactly what you're talking about, but working very closely with you and the right departments at the city.
Well, as Chair of Planning and Land Use...
Oh, yeah.
As we go through these land use impacts and understanding how these transit corridors effectuate and actually would change the face of the city, I look forward to working with you in that capacity and allowing for that access and that input by all the different stakeholders around these projects, and good luck to you.
Thank you, councilman. I make that commitment to you, both for 3010 but also for High-Speed Rail. Sitting on that authority, we will be working very closely with the city of Los Angeles, and your office in particular, to make sure that we recognize that, you know, I think in the past, some of the engineers at High-Speed Rail may have gotten a little excited about their opportunities. We want to bring them back a little bit to earth and make sure that what they're doing and what we're proposing works well with the community and the investment that's already been made, the river being a perfect example.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, councilman.
Mr. Alacan.
Council members, all through history, presidents have known that there are essentially two ways to, for the country to grow its economy. One is by war-making, and the other is by public works construction. President Lincoln knew that for the Intercontinental Railroad that he pushed. President Roosevelt knew that in the aftermath of the Depression with the public works projects, WPA, et cetera, et cetera. Lyndon Johnson knew it when he created CETA Jobs, the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act. And the question is whether or not President Obama, who certainly has an interest in creating jobs, but we have to redirect it, not to feed the banks that don't give a damn about the plekicide, if you will, but give it in terms of real public works jobs that are sustained and will get us out of this bad economy. That's the magic. If we had invested $700 billion in public works jobs, I guarantee you, we would be doing far better than what we have done by investing $700 billion in banks that have essentially just protected their CEO salaries. So, so this is an opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to send that message to our president. I believe he's doing a fantastic job, and the healthcare reform will prove to be a significant part of that. But to solidify the deal, with all the reform of the stock market that we need and the financial industry that we need, we also need to balance that with job creation. So this is, this initiative, as Chair of the Jobs Committee, I can tell you, this is exactly what we need to be doing. But we need to sell it at the federal level. We're not quite there, but we had a tremendous response when the delegation of well over 200 people went to Washington, and that's the way, that's the beauty of this, is the fact that we are united as a community on this labor business. The Chamber of Commerce, it was great to see labor and the Chamber of Commerce going to visit liberals and conservatives alike in Washington to explain why Los Angeles' economy can help the rest of the country. And so this is something that will have tremendous benefit. We absolutely should be promoting it in every... We absolutely should be promoting it in every speech that we give in the community, so that they understand it. And finally, let me say that the Northeast Valley does have some significant projects here, projects that in fact were designed, or not designed, but the ideas were designed ten years ago. The rapid bus system, which the MTA is committed to now in the northeast San Fernando Valley. In light of the fact that high-speed rail is projected come right along San Fernando Road, we have to get these projects lined up with that kind of thinking, so that we can merge the two levels of construction projects that are coming. In fact, I'd like to ask Mr. Katz to talk about how these projects will enable us to be more effective in our high-speed rail development. But all of that coming together, if we did this in thirty years and did the high-speed rail in ten, there would be a disconnect. And by speeding these projects up, there should be a very fluid connection between the development of high-speed rail and these projects that can feed into the high-speed rail. So, with that, obviously, I support this, but I'd like to ask Mr. Katz, since he's a member of the High-Speed Rail Authority and MTA, if he could talk about both issues.
No, thank you, Councilman Alakon. I think that you're exactly right in that by doing this first, we put the infrastructure in place that high-speed rail will then complement. For instance, one of the questions, one of the things we're looking at as we take another look at the L.A.-Anaheim High-Speed Rail Quarter, is, do you really need metrolean high-speed and Amtrak in that corridor? You may need less, not more. You know, I'm reminded of my first meeting with Congresswoman Roy Ball Allard about this, who was reflecting her comments growing up on the East Side when the freeways cut the city apart and not wanting to create, you know, to make that same mistake again with high-speed. Another reason we're looking at keeping it on the ground and doing great separations as opposed to an overhead structure. We're very sensitive to that subject, particularly in Los Angeles, and want to make sure that what we build complements this plan that's laid out here. These twelve projects that have been discussed and vetted and actually achieved, as you will understand, as members understand here, the remarkable goal, actually, a compliment of a unanimous vote at the MTA, which doesn't even do that on adjournment motions, you know, was nothing short of phenomenal in that it represents everyone's commitment to making this work. The other thing that the MTA is doing, which also feeds into this, is looking again at all of our bus lines and making sure that the timing of our bus system works to time with the light rail system or the subway system. That hasn't been done in the past on the goal line, that needs to be fixed, and it will be in the springtime. We need to look at all the lines to make sure that this is a connected system. And your point earlier is, high-speed rail and these twelve deliver, have the ability to deliver a level of connectivity that we've not seen in Southern California before, and that's part of our goal. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. These projects, Councilmember Alakon was talking about public works projects and what it means to the local economy and to families and to workers and to a community like Los Angeles, the second-largest city in the country. What, approximately, how much is a prevailing wage job, say, a laborer or somebody like that, on a prevailing wage project? Is it closer to the $20 an hour, maybe a little bit more?
Not sure, Councilman, but I believe it's in that area. You know, MTA jobs are all prevailing wage jobs. Their bid is prevailing wage jobs, their respondent is prevailing wage jobs, and, you know, and so I think that, you know, whatever that local standard is, which I believe is in the upper teens or lower twenties for here, will be what these jobs are.
And it depends on the particular job, whether it's an electrician or laborer or what have you. So, for example, a prevailing wage job on a project like this might be anywhere between 17 to $27 an hour, and for real, somebody who are highly specialized, it might be even more.
Yes.
Okay. However, that's a big difference between a job that requires prevailing wage and, say, a job or a bid that doesn't require prevailing wage. Here in the city of Los Angeles, if it's city money, at the least, at the least, it requires a living wage, which is probably closer to maybe the $10, $12 an hour range, right? But what's, and what's the minimum wage right now? So, if somebody can be fully employed in Los Angeles and be paid minimum wage, that's closer to like $7.50, somewhere in that range, is my understanding. So, all I'm trying to say is, these jobs are the kinds of jobs that any community needs, correct?
Right.
And these are the kinds of jobs that help the grocery stores stay open. These are the kinds of jobs that help the shoe stores stay open. These are the kinds of jobs that help, if you go down Van Nuys Boulevard, at least half, at least half of the properties that used to sell cars are now empty.
That's right.
These are the kinds of jobs that are going to help the economy of people having jobs, selling cars, owning a car dealership. To a person selling shoes, whether they're selling groceries at the market, these are the kinds of jobs that are really going to help our local economy, aren't they?
Without question. We anticipate that in, as a ten-year program, when we start the serious parts of this construction, probably year three, that in years three through 10, we will be spending approximately $2 billion a year, every year, on construction in L.A. County. That's a huge multiplier, and in fact, there was a recent report that said that 33 states lowered their unemployment rate last month. California did not, and it pointed out in particular, lagging behind the national was the construction industry in California, the exact jobs you're talking about, Councilman. So, two to three billion dollars a year in our local economy for six years, potentially seven years, will not only put a lot of people to work, but as you said, will multiply that money several times throughout every small business in the county. Significant dollars.
Well, also, I mean, you represented the San Fernando Valley as an elected official, and you were, you chaired the Transportation Committee in the State Assembly, and you've been very involved as a volunteer and as a commissioner on many different levels. So, I just want to take this opportunity, I don't, we don't get to talk very much, you're busy, I'm busy, but I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for continuing to serve not only the San Fernando Valley, but the city of Los Angeles with all of your expertise and all of your relationships and all of your experience. So, I want to thank you, Richard Katz, for continuing your commitment to our community. Thank you.
Councilman, thank you very much. Tom Lavonch.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to stand what Mr. Alakon said, as he recited our presidents. Interesting enough, in the history, if you look at Mr. Lincoln, he worked for the railroads prior to him being involved and was greatly involved with the trains coming to the west as the country was developed. And also, on that same accord, as I look at you, Richard, after Mr. Reyes spoke, I thought about your great work that started, was an emphasis for a lot of the focus on the river. And even though it wasn't the right idea, it brought people together for a good thing.
Yeah.
And I thought of you this morning when I saw two big, long-belly trucks with very high sides that prevented the rocks from falling on the freeway.
There you go.
As Mr. Cardenas just mentioned, you've done a lot for this whole state of California, and especially, so I'm pleased that the mayor selected you to be our point person on this, and Mr. De La Vega as well, for your longtime work. And it is about it, directly, if we get all this through, if there's, it could be a simple website attachment, so people could learn about this, know about this, and be part about that. Because the one thing is, is when Richard was talking, many of our parks and schools have a plaque. I'm proud of the one at Marshall High School. Our stadium was built by the Works Project Administration under Mr. Roosevelt's time. So, maybe there's something we could add to that, just so people know the importance of this effort. This is as big as Mulholland bringing water to Los Angeles, to do this effort in the next 10 years. Because even when we started the aqueduct, the bonds were voted on 2007, it wasn't completed 2013, we're right in that area where we could try to achieve another greatness in this first part of this century.
Now, Mr. Lavonch, I appreciate your comments. You're exactly right. This is something on the magnitude of Mulholland or what Robert Moses did in New York. This is transformative, this is the ability to be transformative for L.A. County, to take something we have been lacking, which is a mass transit system, to put people to work, as a number of you have mentioned. This is our own economic stimulus plan. We put this kind of money to work here, sales tax dollars go up, revenue goes up, but more importantly, people go to work with good jobs, well-paying jobs, that have the ability to turn our economy around. So, we accomplish multiple goals. And so, and just in closing, I want to thank the council members, thank the presentations. I appreciate the kind comments about me, but I did think everybody knows pretty well that the brains behind this concept in the beginning certainly would be no surprise to anyone here to know that it was Deputy Mayor De La Vega and his ability to see this picture that allows us to get where we are today. So, it's been a joint effort. We look forward to working with you very closely and the chairman of the committees and the departments to make sure, you know, in some ways, as hard it is to get the commitment, that's easier than actually delivering the projects. But if we don't deliver the projects, it won't be worth anything. And to the Councilman's point, on the MTA website, there is a special website for Measure R, a special part for the Measure R projects, and anyone can go to that at any time and find out about any Measure R project, where it is and the process, whether it's been funded, where it's completed, what the dates are. So, that transparency, we will bring to this as well, Councilman. But that website, which is being updated, one of the things that we're updating with for all of our benefit, including mine, is a glossary at the front of it, so that all those transportation terms that everyone throws around just to confuse everybody, people can actually understand it. I know it'll make it easier for me to understand what's on that website. So, we're moving on all levels, but look forward to working with the council very closely, because obviously, this impacts your constituents, the men and women and children that live in your districts, as the people we're trying to serve. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosendahl.
Just one final comment. Thank you, colleagues. Everybody was right on the mark. It's a no-brainer. But I thought the most exciting moment for me just now was Eric Garcetti telling us, and he showed me a photo of it, he and Antonio Vitor Gozo standing at the airport as the President of the United States is going up to, you know, his plane this morning. They were at the tarmac. And our mayor talked about the Thirty-ten, and the president seemed enthused and excited, and then the president of the council continued the conversation. So, thank you, Mr. Garcetti, for your leadership with the President of the United States. I really believe the federal government's going to back us on that. They're going to put their money where their mouth is, since we did it here. So, this is a great day for Los Angeles, and I must say, for L.A. County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. We have one comment from the valley, Donna Pearman in Van Nuys. We can switch to Van Nuys, please.
Thank you. I thought I wasn't going to speak. Anyway, I forgot to tell you that was terrible about the Nazis, because it's hateful and should be blasted, people should know why they shouldn't have it again. Anyway, don't be fooled, folks, these transit projects are future councilmen's legacies in CRA projects. These transit projects will hurt our city. What businesses and houses will be affected by these transit projects? Mass transit isn't meant for everyone. It's not practical. It's very difficult for, and near possible, for the disabled to take our transit. Our bus stops don't have benches, the disabled are not guaranteed a seat on the bus. Some of these buses don't run frequently. It's impractical. It's in very many places. People have to rely on cars. The bus along Van Nuys Boulevard will ruin businesses, already having trouble. We will have parking problems. It is underground. May I remind people, this is earthquake country. Our streets aren't wide enough for an orange line bus, only, only, orange line or bus-only lane on Van Nuys Boulevard. Our streets are congested enough on Van Nuys Boulevard and along Wilshire Boulevard. It's going to cost the city a lot of money it doesn't have. Our city believes in spending every cent it has is being given. No wonder our city is such deficient. Why should everyone pay for a transit project to use by only a percentage of people? People should spend our sales tax on saving our city services, like all these people, so they won't have to be on FERO, so that people won't have to be laid off. That's where we should have had our sales tax, paying sales tax to save city services, not have just a lot of money being spent to only help out a minority of the people. This is wrong. Vote no on this sales tax for transit.
That matter is now before us, colleagues. Please open the roll. Close the roll, tab, let the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Very well. Thank you. Thank you, members. Thank you. Thank you. Fourth with Mr. Lavonch. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item four, called special by Councilmember Hahn, and there are cards on that.
On the cards, Ms. Hahn will go to the speakers first. Dr. Williams, number four, sir. Dr. Williams, you in chambers? Dr. Williams is not in chambers. John Walsh, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at hollywoodhighlands.org. Ladies and gentlemen, I want you to know that everything I say here is listened to by the bond rating agencies. I have had that on very high authority. They also read our blog, hollywoodhighlands.org, to find out what's really happening in this city, and that means your bond rating goes down. Now, the reason that the mayor was out there on the tarmac had nothing to do with Thirty-ten. It had to do with the mayor apologizing to the President of the United States, and he has a picture of it, for the rudeness, how he was treated at the fundraiser. A hundred people screaming and shouting at him, you can see on the video, he leaves the podium. He leaves the podium and starts shouting at Barbara Boxer, "What's going on here?" until they control it. Now, I don't know if it's true, but people, the rumor mill is that the President of the United States said to an aide at that later in the car, used an anti-gay slur about the protesters. Now, I would like the President of the United States to say whether that's true or not. I know there are a lot of lies about him.
Mr. President, this is nowhere near this topic. Thank you. If we could bring it back to the credit agency. Thank you very much.
Miguel Santana goes to a five-day rehab. He's back in here. Your top-budget guy is out. Mayor Zant out. The mayor did something today, this morning, I won't talk about, something very bizarre. You have a very bizarre mayor, and you have the entire city, and of course, you are the most Nazi-tolerant city council in the world, and I want every hate group to know, come to L.A., you'll get a permit, and you can scream and yell.
That's a little bit out of order. Thank you. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After Mr. Dowd will be Ankur Patel.
Hello, my name is Ankur Patel. This is a North Hollywood.
I'm sorry, you're after Mr. Dowd. Sorry. Mr. Dowd, and then Ankur Patel.
Too loud, couldn't hear anything.
All right, yes, thank you. Been talking about it for a long time, and these are the questions that the Daily News should be asking. Number one, what exactly is the structural deficit in the city books right now? And what I mean by that is, how much is the city committed every year to pay the pension money? And the reason we have to pay the pension money is because they lost all their pension money, putting it into scams, that they got sucked into with the mayor, the city council approved. They lost all the money, and I need them to come in here and tell us exactly how much of the Los Angeles City Employee Retirement System Fund is left. Because if we're carrying the can for the whole pension fund and our structural deficit is $650 million a year, then the credit rating will continue to plummet, because it's impossible to run a business with that kind of a structural deficit. So, you have to restructure. Until you restructure, the credit agency is going to keep listening to me and John Walsh and anyone else who's out here. So, you got ripped off, okay? The banks, Goldman Sachs, the SEC, they're charging Goldman Sachs, all the other banks are going to follow, because the banks allow, they encourage the mortgage originators to write these fraudulent mortgages that could never be paid, outrageous amounts of mortgage value. They bundle them all together and sold them all on to everybody else in the whole world. The whole world bought these collateralized debt obligations, mortgage-backed securities. It's not over. So, I need to know how much is gone from the pension fund for all these good firemen and police who worked for the city. And until we restructure, like Wendy Gruhl says, it's over.
Thank you. Ankur Patel is our next speaker.
Hello, my name is Ankur Patel. I'm from Chatsworth. This is a North Hollywood high school. I went there by bus. So, all this transportation stuff, I understand. Today, I'd like to submit my six-page analysis of the DWP's budget on record. I went through it line by line. Can I submit this? And I would appreciate it if one of you councilmen would read this, because the, any one of you, please, Councilman Corrian, Councilman Rosendahl, Councilman Smith, you are my councilmen. And I've also submitted it to Rafael Prieto, he's a chief legal analyst of the city, ABC News, New York LA Times. I've given this document, and it is clear that the information that is made available to the public is not the same information that is used to make decisions by these managers of the DWP. And that is not the way it should be. So, one of these things is about sustainability. We need to have a sustainable economic structure. The plastic bag campaign, I would still like to see that go on. Public transportation is part of the sustainability issue. Priuses are not the solution, public transportation is. Now, I know we feel like we can continue to put money into the system, but the tap card, the card that we use to get on the buses, the subways, is not a good system. And the reason why it's not good is because we have the MTA, we have L.A. Dash and commuter express, we have the Culver City Bus, we have the Blue Bus, we have the Foothill, Antelope Valley, all of these different organizations come into the valley, come into L.A. with their own systems of transportation. Their goal is not. Their goal is not to get A to B, get me from point A to point B. Their goal is to make money. They don't work together well. And as a council, it should be your job to make sure that these different bus transportation agencies work together to get us from A to B. Now, last week, I made, unfortunately, I brought into question Councilman Smith's record of being a police officer, not. That wasn't my issue. My issue was, there's a picture that is mailed to our home. That is the meme, that is the idea, that is the soundbite that we see. And I know you guys are searching for it, to get yourself elected.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. We next have Ms. Hahn, and after that will be Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I introduced a motion that wanted our CIO to report on this recent move by the credit rating agencies to recalibrate our municipal bonds. And I don't know, Ray, are you here? Do you wanna come up to the table?
CIO, Don't be general.
Anybody? Just had a few questions, wanna know if this is good news or bad news. Colleagues, you know that our municipal bonds are rated differently than corporate bonds, and there has been some suggestion that municipal bonds should also maybe be rated particularly on the, you know, the likelihood of default. And that's how corporate debt is rated, and many of us feel like municipal debt should also be rated in terms of the likelihood of default, which is very, very low. So, I was gonna ask you, tell us what this means, that the rating agencies are looking to recalibrate municipal bonds. Is that good news? Is that bad news? When will it happen? Have our bonds been looked at to recalibrate yet? If not, when? And what does this mean for us?
Sure. I think actually, in general, this is good for municipal government.
Can you explain to people what this means? How is municipal debt rated versus corporate debt? And how will this recalibration change that?
Well, certainly, prior to sort of the recalibration by the rating agencies, certainly the agencies took a more broad view of both municipal debt and corporate debt. And so, in many respects, and many people felt that municipal debt was sort of viewed a little negatively when it came to corporate debt. But basically, there's been so much interest in this, in order to separate the two, because of the risk of default on the muni side has been very, very low, that there's been a lot of folks raising this issue. And certainly, our state treasurer has been sort of explaining and sort of giving a message out that we, in the muni market, should be rated a little bit differently based on our default rates from the past. This will certainly, actually, when it comes to our debt, we will be recalibrated by Fitch and by Moody's. We need to view this, though, this is not an upgrade, but this is just a recalibration. Basically, our ratings will increase by one notch. It's not--
It's not that our--
An upgrade in the traditional sense.
It's not that our financial outlook is any different, it's just that our bonds will be rated differently based on this recalibration. And will it be based on this idea of the likelihood of default?
Yes, it's really, the core issue is really basically the likelihood of default on municipal debt.
Now, when you say we won't exactly get a rating increase, however, at the state level, after the recalibration, the state general obligation bonds went from triple B to A minus. So, what you're saying, it's sort of like 60 is the new 40. I mean, it's, nothing has really changed. It's just that, under this new rating criteria, we probably will have a higher grade. Is that--
Yes. I think that's good. I like that the 60s and now the new 40.
Right. So, nothing's really changed, it's just it's gonna be viewed a little bit differently.
That's correct.
And basically, the cities in the state that have been recalibrated, has that been the trend, though? That their credit rating has changed higher?
Have we heard from--
Do we know that?
This is still a work in progress. Mario Vazquez was the city administrative officer, but it is a work in progress. Moody's has implemented the system Fitch will implement it in the next two weeks or so. So, we still need to find out from different agencies or municipalities what the effect is.
Right. I mean, this is obviously important to us, it's important to DWP, because obviously, it's our rating that tells us what it's going to cost us to borrow the money. So, while maybe our financial situation hasn't changed, will this entice investors to purchase our bonds when they're rated purely or more likely on the, on our likelihood of default?
I would say, you know, at this point, we're reluctant to sort of put a number as far as debt service and the reduction costs, but I do believe that there will be a positive aspect of this, given the recalibration, given the likelihood of default, that it will be a positive action on our debt in the future as we go out.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. Grant. Oh, Mr. Grant. Hang on.
Thank you. So, basically, what Ms. Hahn was pointing out is, our rating is gonna change, not based on anything we did, it's just based on the way the rating agencies are looking at us at municipal debt. That is correct. And the bottom line is, yeah, I'd like to thank Ms. Hahn for putting this motion forward, so we can let the public know about how ridiculous the rating agencies have treated their governments at every level. And also, I'd like to publicly thank California Treasurer Bill Lockyer, because he was the one that spoke out the loudest, and he actually has a little bit more authority than we do to demand that these changes be made. And he basically was pointing out the glaring fact that even though municipalities, cities, counties, state governments, et cetera, that our default rate is nowhere near, nowhere near the default rate of private industry.
Right.
Yet, private corporations and industry were able to go out to the market and sell their bonds at a higher rating than us as governments, just because the rating agencies refused to look at us realistically and tell the people who wanna buy these bonds and invest in our city or our governments, they refused to tell them the truth. And the truth of the matter is that we're less of a risk than a similar corporation. Isn't that what was going on before? That even though we were less of a risk, we, our public taxpayers, were having to put up with us paying more for people to put money into the city of Los Angeles by buying our bonds?
Yes, basically, because of the one rating system, yes, we were, we did not get the appropriate rating or attention that we should've been, given our risk of default.
And two of the three main rating agencies, it seems like Fitch is actually changing their ways, thank God, and Standard and Poor's are as well, excuse me, Moody's.
Moody's.
Moody's. Fitch and Moody's, it appears that Fitch's rating is planning on changing and giving a higher rating to 38,000 municipalities, 38,000 rated governments. And then Moody's is actually doing that for approximately 70,000 rated governments. Yet, at the same time, Standard and Poor's doesn't plan on making any changes. Do we understand what's going on with Standard and Poor's? Are they just being arrogant? Are they just, or by the way, who can force them to change their rating formulas?
As far as S&amp;P, I believe they believe that they have, you know, already sort of made adjustments. Certainly, I think with Fitch and Moody's changing their system, their rating system and the recalibration, they're probably, I would suspect, renewed pressure on S&amp;P to sort of revisit this policy that they've laid out right now.
So, but technically, nobody can force them, as far as we're aware, today.
No.
Perhaps the President can declare something, or Congress can possibly, or create a different rating agency that's gonna have more authority than them, perhaps? Absence something like that, it's up to them to decide.
Yes.
Well, I think that Standard and Poor's has their name wrong. It should be Poor Standard. It should be Poor Standard. They're sticking to a Poor Standard. It has no semblance of logic. It's hurting the taxpayers. It's hurting the people of Los Angeles, the people of California, and people across this nation. And it's giving the wrong image to investors around the world about whether or not our governments are a solid investment, and they should invest in our local communities. So, I think that it's important that we figure out, and I would ask the staff, the CIO's office, to find out, what are the legalities and technicalities that Standard and Poor's can stick to this illogical, ill-thought-of, bad habit that they've been doing for decades now? That's hurting all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Zion. Like I know, Mr. Alarcon has criticized the rating agencies a number of times. He hates them, okay? And if you listen to the current news, number of the institutions that were rated AAA are no longer in business. And Mr. Cardenas is mentioning the honesty and integrity of these rating agencies. It appears that those that are doing the rating are somehow misguided. And I think when they reduce our rating, that serves someone's advantage. The investor's obviously gonna get a better interest rate, it's gonna cost the taxpayers more money. So, a lot of things come under review. I know the Attorney General of California has filed suit against a number of these to get to the facts, to get the honesty brought forward. And it appears that we're held to a standard where the credit agency decides what's gonna happen with the investments, what's gonna happen with the city of Los Angeles, and we rely on that as a legitimate source. I think that legitimate source is now being attacked, rightfully so, because of what we've seen happen in the past where they had AAA ratings. So, while the people are still paying taxes, the city has not crumbled, the state of California, people are still paying their state taxes, their property taxes. Some people paint this picture of gloom and doom. While the revenues may not be as great as they were before, people are still living, working, and paying taxes. And the roads are still as congested as before we had this economic downturn. So, I think whatever we can do to help our Attorney General in bringing forth the truth, because we wanna issue a bond, if that bond's gonna pay that investor more money, that helps the investor, and it's a detriment to the taxpayer, the people who are gonna be responsible for that. And it really troubles me that, as I see now, this bond rating system, Moody's, Fitch, the ones that have come about giving these ratings higher or low, it affects us every single way, and no one's really questioned until now. But if we look at what's happened with the mortgages, what happened with Countrywide, what's happened with some of the other companies that are no longer around, they had great ratings. And obviously, something is suspect, and now it's coming to an element where the Attorney General's investigating. So, I don't have a lot of credibility, but Mr. Alarcon has been very vocal about his disdain for them, and I think it's now surfacing more and more of how we can't trust everything they say when they wanna come and rate the city of Los Angeles. People are not leaving the city of L.A. in droves. We're not gonna turn into a ghost town, as some predict. So, I think we have to balance that at the same time. And if we don't issue bonds, then those bond raters and those issues, the people who are gonna issue, we're also gonna suffer financially. So, they wanna rely on that. But I think the bottom line is, there's lack of integrity, lack of honesty, and real question as to how they're doing their rating, since they don't have a very positive track record, as we've seen coming to the surface.
Thank you, Mr. Zion.
I know you're nodding, but say something, Ray.
Well, I think what has come out, which is very important, is, you know, the state, certainly the state treasurer has sort of, has really taken the lead on this issue. And I think it's important for municipal government to certainly have a consistent and clear message. You know, we're participants in the League of California Cities, all these other organizations. I think it's important for us to basically convey to the rating agencies, hey, you know what, we appreciate what you've done, we appreciate you actually recalibrating your ratings, you know, we need to continue to move in that positive direction to help municipal government out.
Thank you, Mr. Zion. Thank you for your honesty about your own credibility. Mr. Alarcon?
Councilmembers, as you know, I've said publicly, I don't like these guys. They're cronies for the billionaire mindset that is trying to take control of this country. The fact of the matter is that the billionaires who are represented through multinational corporations, can you imagine the level of greed that you have to have to want to be a billionaire? Can you fathom what kind of greed that it would take to need to have a billion dollars? That is not the American notion of democracy. They are buying our country off acre by acre and property by property. By the way, what was the rating, the raters, who rated Goldman Sachs? And what was their rating? Does anybody know? Was it Poor Standard? Was it Moody's? Was it, who rated them? What idiots rated Goldman Sachs?
Typically, Standard and Poor's and Moody's would rate investment banks such as Goldman.
And what was their rating? Does anybody know?
I don't know, but the rating would allow investors to invest at Goldman Bank, Goldman Sachs, if they so choose.
Oh, I understand it was AAA. Somebody just whispered that over my ear, but who rated Lehman Brothers?
They were rating all of them.
Who rated Lehman Brothers? Does anybody know that? See, I think the public ought to be rating the rating agencies, because they're doing a horrible job. Their success ratio has just, if they're making money, I'm sure they are, but they're not making money for the Americans, that's for sure. Only a few of them. Bottom line is, we have to, I'm very excited that Timothy Geithner said that financial reform is the next goal for the Obama administration. Because that is truly where this country needs to go to protect the middle class of America. We cannot afford billionaires to be buying policy positions in the nation, particularly the couple that are trying to buy the state of California right now, because they will sell us out, just like these rating agencies. So, colleagues, my staff is now preparing a resolution to call on the Obama administration as part of their financial reform efforts, to reform the rating agencies, to make them have a public good as part of their mission, not just to be prostitutes for the stock market and the banking industry and the insurance companies and the billionaires who are trying to buy our country. That's real change, and that's real positivity moving forward for the American dream and the middle class of America. I'm not even talking about the benefits to the poor. I'm saying that these people are ripping off the middle class. They're the ones who lost their homes, they're the ones who are losing their investments in their retirement programs, they're the ones that are losing the American dream that they invested in. And they're the ones that we need to protect.
Ms. Hahn?
Well, thank you. I appreciate the discussion, and hopefully, we can get back an update when our municipal debt has been recalibrated. And also, DWP, would be nice to get a report back on how that affects them. And by the way, I just wanted to give a shout-out to our National League of Cities, who has actually been calling for this kind of rating agency reform, and has been calling for legislation that would, you know, force them to do this. I think a lot of them are seeing the writing on the wall and are moving to do this voluntarily, which I think is important. But, you know, this was part of the Comprehensive Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act that was passed by Congress last December, this idea of, you know, eliminating these dual ratings of corporate debt and municipal debt. It makes a lot of sense. And again, we've been, you know, I think wrongly perceived in the investor world, because, again, the likelihood of the city of Los Angeles defaulting on our municipal bonds is extremely low. And whether or not, you know, the 60 is the new 40, I still think that recalibrating our debt and having a bond rating that is more reflective of that bottom line, which is really, should be the most important thing to investors, and should be the most important thing when you look at buying bonds, is the likelihood of default. And in that, I think we should be very proud of our history there. So, thank you.
Very well. That matter, Mr. Lavange is withdrawn. I'm watching his gestures. Ryan, thank you. That matter is note and file. There's no vote required on that matter. Thank you for the--
Thank you for the presentation. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item five was called special for cards.
Let's go to Van Nuys, Donna Pyramid in Van Nuys, California. Donna Pyramid.
Thank you. And first I wanted to clarify, when I mentioned constriction, I meant CRA constriction. Let me make this clear, I am for police officers, but here we go again. We have overtime because our city council doesn't use our money effectively. How much was needed because of the ones who work with police was on furlough? And how come we needed police for Nazi sympathizers? Why do we have to have money to offend and discuss people with these Nazi sympathizers? It was terrible. How can we spend this money on overtime when we won't let our city employees have their cost of living, having employees on furlough? We should have the CRA pay for this police overtime. CRA causes a bigger need for police. CRA is the reason why the rest of the city services are having problems. And if they didn't need our money for their projects, the overtime would have no problem. So we need to worry about why the CRA is diverting all our money, and that is the reason why we would have a problem paying for overtime for the police. So I'll be back on this. I think we need to go after the CRA, then we'll have the money for this overtime. Thank you.
Matt Dowd.
Yes, she's right about one thing, taking trash collection fees to be used for LAPD. Why? Because the city is broke and doesn't have the money for the police, let alone all the other services. So here's what we need to do. You're trying to make us believe that the rating agencies now are the cause of the city's financial woes, that's why you have to do these kind of things. They were hiding all their losses. Don't you understand that? Okay? It's not the rating, it's the Republicans here, the Republicans who voted against even investigating Goldman Sachs on the SEC. They almost got away with that. See? So that's the problem here, no regulations, and you went and tipped all this pension money into this hole.
Mr. President, this isn't related to this item.
These kind of things, because you're in a budget crisis, and it's because of the Republicans in here, too, had no freaking fiscal regulation.
I think that was way off the subject. Nevertheless, Jose Aguilar. Try and stay on the subject, Mr. Aguilar.
I don't remember when I was ever off the subject. I would like the city council to tell me when I was off the subject matter on any item. Listen, I have here the overtime from the... Ooh, I forgot. There's a trust fund, I guess, in City Seven, and you're going to fund your police overtime, $150,000 worth through that trust fund. We have a similar fund, which does relate to the same fund in Mr. Alarcon's district. It's called the Clark's Fund. And we had a lot of issues in getting some transparency with the Clark's Fund, because we, too, are extremely worried about funding our public safety using these so-called slush funds or so-called discretionary funds in order to preserve our ambulance services, in order to avoid these brownouts in our district also. The reason I'm here is because I want my community, City Fourteen, to understand how these slush fund discretionary funds can be used to fund public safety services, i.e. police, i.e. public safety, i.e. ambulance services. So I'm putting this council on notice, as the public becomes educated on your slush funds, your discretionary funds, we're going to ask the city council to have your discretionary funds dumped into the general fund and make damn sure that our public safety is fully funded, which includes ambulances, which, I mean, you know, I like the police, but the thing is, when somebody gets shot, somebody's got to pick them up, and that's ambulance. So I would like for this council to consider the position discretionary funds and use your discretionary funds, put in the general fund, and make sure that we receive our public safety services fully paid for. Thank you very much.
Daniel Barnett.
First up, I'd like to say I'm grateful for all the work that the police department is doing today, and I'd like to congratulate them for all the hard work they're doing, for the men and women, and I'd like the city council just to give them a round of applause. Second, in regards to the money, I just recently started to pay attention to politics three years ago by a young senator from Chicago, Illinois. And once I started to pay attention to politics, the more I look into it, the more I see there's a lot of incompetence in the politics. And the reason for that, there's a lot of waste of spending. I visit schools, I visit government buildings, and I see on a day-to-day basis that we're wasting thousands, hundreds, hundreds of thousands of millions of dollars. And I'm trying to understand why are we wasting so much money? There are politicians, we're not spending money, we don't purchase things by wholesale or retail, we're spending things over 100% to 200% markup. If we can capture that money and put that money back into the city, we can pay for the things that needs to be paid for. So that's the only thing I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Hubman.
Hi, my name is Michael Hubman. I'm a human rights and homeless rights activist, a member of CASI, the Coalition for the Abolition of Safer Cities Initiative. Item five, one A and B, $30,000 for Foothill. I'm good with that. $30,000 for Mission, I'm good with that. I know where we can find $5 or $6 million that begs to be diverted. That is the Safer Cities Initiative. This exercise in oppression and harassment has got to end. Let's do away with it and start it over. Let's bring those homeless people who have targets on their back into the discussion...
Mr. Hubman, that's not the subject. Stay on the subject, sir. The subject matter is the appropriation for those police divisions in the valley, not about downtown.
Let them have it.
Thank you. Thank you. John Walsh, our final speaker on this matter, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you.
Yeah, one minute left, Mr. Walsh. One minute.
Thank you. The check is in the mail, Dennis, for the promotion. H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. Ladies and gentlemen, on police overtime, I'm for this police overtime, $200,000, times 15. Well, the police overtime, I would like an audit, not only of this overtime, but of the overtime Saturday. And I want the overtime at the Nazi rally. And I also want to know how many more Nazi rallies can we schedule, and how much will the overtime cost us? At $200,000, the word is out, everybody who wants to hold a pro-Nazi rally, come to L.A. It's the only city...
Mr. Walsh, you're not on the subject. Mr. Walsh, Foothill, Mission.
Recalled Antonio Villagosa.
That's not the subject either, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, thank you. Your time is up. Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Alarcon. Alarcon, Mr. Alarcon, your time's up, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah, council members, this is a simple measure. Several of the speakers were way off base on this one. First of all, the Lopez Canyon Fund is supported by a profit that is derived from the sale of methane gas from Lopez Canyon. Half of that money is given back to the Lakeview Terrace, Pocoyoa community, because they had to suffer with, living with a landfill in their backyard all these years, and they're currently suffering with all the trucks, and they will be doing that for the next 30 years. So when I was a councilman the first time around, we made sure that part of the profits from the Cambrian Energy Project are given back to the community so they can develop amenities to at least try to provide some sense of balance in the responsibility that they have borne for receiving more than 90% of the city's trash at one point. So that's, the money is coming out of this fund. And there's also, on the rationale side for why we have to do this, we have correctly told the police department to do a better job of managing their overtime. Unfortunately, at the same time that they have reached their approximate maximums in the Foothill and Mission divisions, we've had a spike in homicides, gang-related homicides in the northeast San Fernando Valley, to the extent that we need more overtime to ensure that those crimes can be solved. For me, it's about the families that have to wait for longer periods of time, and sometimes while evidence disappears if it is not aggressively pursued. Secondly, many of the problems, in fact, last Saturday, a young man, 17 years old, was shot in the head at a party. One of the primary purposes of this overtime is to allow LAPD to continue to program for the summer their party patrols. And these are patrols that are specially trained to work, to ensure that parties aren't conducted by gang members that are potentially very violent, that there are not paid parties, which are illegal, that where a family is conducting a party is perfectly fine, but if they're loud, they can be told to tone it down, and they won't be cited on the first event. And so, but so much of the gang violence emerges with the party atmosphere, and in the case of last Saturday, nitrous oxide, alcohol, and drugs were a horrible combination. And by the way, many of the participants were minors, so, including the young man who was shot, obviously. So for all those reasons, and I had a community meeting with people who are from that community, not the four people who presented in public testimony, and the community clearly wants this money to be dedicated to Foothill and Mission, which, by the way, have established tremendous working relationships with the community out there, and so that's what this money is for. I wish every one of us had funds like this, but remember that in order to get one of these funds, you probably would have had to have a landfill in your backyard, and that's no pleasure, trust me.
All right, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
13 nines.
That is approved. Next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused May 26th, July 20th, 21st, and 23rd for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, he is excused.
Councilmember Labange requests to be excused to arrive late on Friday, April 30th for city business. That meets council policy.
He's excused as well.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Now, can I please ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions? Everybody in chambers, please to rise for adjourning motions. Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize Mr. Wesson for our first adjourning motion. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Mr. President and members. This past Friday, I was watching the conclusion of a series called Spartacus: Blood and Sand. And if you're into gory stuff, it's one heck of a series. But what amazed me is during this movie, people didn't refer to their families as the Smith family or the Wesson family. They would refer to them as the House of Smith and the House of Wesson. I rise today to tell each and every one of you that this has been a terrible year for the House of Wesson, and I'm joined here by members of my staff. You all know that on February 14th, my chief of staff, Charme Van Poel, passed away. I'll never forget that day, because it's Valentine's Day. On April 15th, Victor DeRaso of my office passed away, and I definitely won't forget that day, because that's tax deadline day. I was sitting in my office, speaking with Charme and DeRan when I first got here, and I was just kind of imagining, I needed a face in my front office, and I was imagining the perfect employee. And I said, I wanted somebody, and I hope I didn't violate any, what do you call it, job personnel issues. I said, well, if I had my druthers, I would want a man to be the face soon as you come in my office. I'd want him to be mature. I would want him to be the most pleasant human being on the planet. And in fact, for balance and diversity in my office, it would be a good thing if he happened to be gay. Lo and behold, the exact person that I described was introduced to me by... Where's Joe?
On that side.
Come here, Joe. Was introduced to me by Joe Torres, who came over with me from the county of Los Angeles. They were friends for a very long time. Now, we love Joe, but Joe is a handful. So we needed somebody in the office that could keep this young fellow under control and make sure he did his job, and Victor did that. He is/was the most pleasant man that you'd ever want to meet. I never received one complaint from Victor. When constituents were irate, justified or not justified, Victor had this ability to diffuse them and deliver the services that they needed. He will be sorely missed. He was unique. I said I wanted a person who was comfortable with who they were, and a person who, you know, sometimes we hire people, and three days later, you know, I want to be the next chief of staff, or I wanted somebody that was going to be happy, to be the face of my office, and he was. His love was art. He was an artist. In fact, I have a piece of his artwork hanging in my home right now. The House of Wesson is every staff member, every member of their family and my family put together, and we are shocked by this. He died of cancer. He battled it, he battled it like a gladiator for quite a while. And even though he might have been considered not one of the highest-ranking members of the staff, he was definitely one of the hardest-working, and whenever we would do things that would take after-hours or what have you, Victor was always there. Victor was born on the Fourth of July in Arizona. He was the second of five kids, so he's got 16 nieces and nephews, two brothers, two sisters, and they tell me that for five years, he lived in Mexico, and he was... Somebody's going to have to help me out with this. Florrico dancer or something like?
Flocortico.
Flo...
Flocortico.
Flocortico dancer for, is that Amelia Hernandez?
Amelia Hernandez.
Amelia Hernandez. And so he lived in Mexico five years, he lived here for the most of his life, and prior to coming and working for us, he worked at the Gay and Lesbian Center. So if I could get all members on this adjourning motion, it would be appreciated. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. We'll make sure all members are on that. Colleagues, I asked that we adjourn today for Darlene Wilson as well, who passed away on Sunday, April 18th, at the age of 51. She's the mother of Barry Stone, who works at Dunn, whom many of you, I know, know, and she was also fighting cancer, brain cancer in this case, for the last two years. She was a full-time foster parent that never turned a child away that was in need. She raised many children through the Department of Children and Family Services, and many of her own nieces and nephews, and gave countless hours of volunteer service to the City of Los Angeles through the Van Ness Recreation Center. She's volunteered as a team mom for many years, while her children played various sports at the center, and she has been the glue that kept her family together through all the trials and tribulations. She's survived by her seven children, Barry Stone, Andre Stone, Cory Stone, Bobby Stone, Ray Sean Lee, Wilburn Willoughby, and Unique Lee. And we certainly mourn the early passing of Darlene Wilson, and our love is with Barry and the entire family. May she rest in peace. Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask all members to join me on this, is that in memory of Nancy Grant, born July 19th, 1922, in Utah, passed away April 13th. She's the wife of Larry Grant, who we've honored several times in council as the founder of the Kingdom Day Parade on MLK Day. She and Larry were married in 1947, and they have traveled all over the world, they have four children, and certainly Larry was also a proud member of the military. In addition to their four children, they also have nine grandchildren and nine great-grandkids. nine great-grandchildren. Uh, they were married for over 62 years, uh, and Larry was quoted that even, uh, in the day that she passed on, that he certainly missed her deeply after all those years. The viewing, uh, will be at 3:00 PM on Tuesday, April 27th, at Green Hills Marquetry, located in Rancho Palos Verdes. And the funeral will be held at 10:00 AM Wednesday, April 28th, at St. Margaret's Mary's Church in Lamita. Uh, and then also ask that we adjourn in memory, in memory of, uh, Alva Willis, born in 1942 in New Orleans, died Wednesday, April, uh, 14th, 2010. Uh, she enjoyed growing up in New Orleans, went to Savania Williams Elementary School, Presley Junior High School, and Booker T. Worthington High School, and then graduated from Louisiana State University. Uh, she was very adventurous, moved to the city of Los Angeles in the 60s. Shortly thereafter, became, uh, married to Ed Willis. Uh, she began her professional career, uh, and remained for 33 years as an outstanding employee of the Los Angeles Department of Ward and Power, where she, uh, retired as an executive counselor for retirees. She continued her education, attended and graduated Cal State LA with a bachelor's degree in psychology and a master's degree in sociology. She, to further her preparation for her career, she attended and graduated from Cal State Long Beach with a master's in social work. Uh, while working on her master's at Cal State LA, she volunteered for the Sojourn House, a shelter for battered women. After years with Los Angeles Department of Ward and Power, she began fulfilling her career passion and helped youth reach their potential, uh, and rescued them from adverse environment. She also worked for the D.D. Hirsch Community Mental Health Center. Her memorial services will be Friday, April 23rd, at Angeles Marquetry on South Crenshaw. She's survived by her husband, Ed, and many family and friends.
Thank you. Will that Mr. Wesson do that? Mr. Wesson, do you want to add some words?
If I could, uh, probably Janice and Jan and myself would like to be added on the Mrs. Grant. Or maybe all, I didn't hear you say all members. Okay.
Do all members. Okay. Mr. Labange?
Members, I'd like to ask we adjourn in memory of Bert Schmidt, who was involved with our Sister City Program. Uh, in 1978, I met him, uh, and, uh, he was very, uh, involved and helped me form some of my impressions over the year of the worldview. Uh, he survived by his wife Gabby. Uh, also like we had a, we had a, uh, adjourned memory of Jack Stewart, who lived in Hollywood on Hobart. Uh, I met his wife, uh, many, many years ago, who was a nurse at Hollywood Presbyterian when she'd walk after, uh, her shift in Griffith Park. She and Jack also were great participants in Griffith Park with Charlie Turner and the Charlies Lunch Bunch up at Dante's View. This morning in the fog, as I climbed Mount Hollywood, I ran into Marina, and, uh, I hadn't seen her for about a month or two, and, uh, a tear rolled from her eyes and she told me Jack had died. Uh, they were married many, many years. He lived to be at the great age of 85, which is a blessing. Not everybody gets that blessing, so every day is a blessing. I ask we adjourn in memory of Jack Stewart.
Thank you. Mr. Cardenas for announcements?
An announcement, uh, as, uh, Councilmember Wesson was mentioning his dedicated staff, I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank everybody for your professionalism and your willingness to come to work and sacrifice away from your family. It occurred to me today that what happened on Friday is one of my staff, was that, are you okay? You okay? Actually, I came to council because it's my job. And sometimes we miss council, things happen. But my daughter was going through surgery. Her surgery got postponed for about three months because it's very delicate surgery. It was oral surgery. And they would, every time we would schedule the surgery, they said, no, she's got a cold or she's coming off of a cold or what have you. So, they had to make sure that she was just fine before they could go through the surgery. She went through the surgery just fine. But it occurred to me today that it's very uncommon for us to hear the public and/or each other say thank you for sacrificing, for dedication. How many of us elected officials have missed our families' birthdays? How many of us have missed anniversaries? How many of us have missed many, many things that most families take for granted? And that's the kind of dedication not only our selected officials display and exude, but that's the kind of dedication that many of the staff that work for us elected officials and many staff who work for this city. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to all the staff and all the elected officials, because you reminded me, Herb, there's a lot of beautiful people in our life and in our families. And we take their time for granted. And then when they're gone, we can only talk about how much we appreciated them. So, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Richard, Janice, all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Zine?
Just an announcement on the funeral for Chief Del Gates. Uh, they notified us that it will be next Tuesday at 9:00 AM at the Cathedral for Chief Del Gates, next Tuesday at 9:00 AM at the Cathedral.
Thank you. Any other announcements or adjourning motions? If not, Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll? It will next be in session tomorrow. Uh, that is-